We're going to get started. Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, Council Ordinance 24-0521, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025. Eric Costello, Councilman from the 11th District Chair of the Committee, joined by Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District Member of the Committee, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District Member of the Committee, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District. To my immediate right is Toni Leva, staff to the Committee, joined by members of the Mayor's and Council President's Office. Sorry, I dropped my phone. One of my phones. We are here for Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, or MIMA, Director, if you could take it away. And please introduce all your senior staff, first, last name and position title.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the Council, Catalina Rodriguez Lima, I am the Director of the Baltimore City Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs, known as MIMA, and I am here with my work colleagues, Joyce Calabren, who is MIMA's Language Access Coordinator, and Kirsten Sabares, who is our Baltimore New American Access Coalition Project Manager. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Thank you. MIMA's mission is to promote the economic growth, community well-being, and the integration of new Americans living in the city of Baltimore. In terms of our goals for fiscal year 2025, we will continue to focus on language access. The recommended budget includes MIMA's Language Access Program, which provides language access resources to city agencies to ensure compliance with federal mandates. In February of this year, the CAO also released a directive requiring city agencies to comply with language access. MIMA is currently onboarding a number of city agencies and working on refreshing policies. Compliance means that they have a designated liaison with our office, that they have a completed Language Access Guidance Document, and that employees participate in a Language Access Training. With the help of an ARPA Fund grant, we recently developed a Language Access e-Learning Module that will be available in Workday for all city employees at the end of this month. We will also continue to provide technical assistance to city agencies. Our budget supports MIMA's four full-time staff, which collectively provide technical assistance to the administration and city agencies to ensure that Baltimore city services are accessible and inclusive of immigrant communities. And then finally, we will also continue to serve as a source of communications, engagement, and outreach. In 2022, we received a temporary grant from the CDC to strengthen our communication and engagement roles. We were able to hire a full-time staff who is working to increase our social and ethnic media presence along our engagement. This grant ends at the end of the month, and we are exploring opportunities to stay in that particular role. Moving on to our performance measures. Earlier this year, MIMA submitted its inaugural performance plan with the Mayor's Office of Performance Innovation, which outlined 11 performance measures across four service areas: Technical Assistance and Comprehensive Support, Language Access and Federal Compliance, Community Building and Engagement, and Messaging and Communications. Because this is our first performance plan, there are no data or targets prior to fiscal year '24. The performance measure we wanted to highlight today speaks to our expanding work with language access and the amount of technical assistance hours our staff provides to city agencies. Currently, MIMA is working with 10 city agencies of 25 agencies identified to develop or update language access plans. In fiscal year '25, we plan to work with the remaining 15 agencies. MIMA also manages a centralized account for telephonic interpretation for 23 agencies, which do not include 311 or 911, as they manage their own accounts. We have seen a steady increase in usage as we have worked to consolidate old accounts and have worked to increase awareness among city employees of this resource. We're on track to exceed 30,000 minutes of interpretation in fiscal year '24. And so far this fiscal year, we have supported constituents in 27 languages. Also, one of MIMA's key activities is to provide technical assistance to city agencies to ensure their services are inclusive of immigrants. Our fiscal year '24 target is to provide 3,000 hours of TA to city agencies. MIMA currently has, as I mentioned earlier, four full-time staff, two part-time contractors, and four grant-funded positions in our office. During fiscal year '25, the four grant-funded positions will close out, significantly reducing our capacity, particularly in terms of TA. Our goal is to expand TA support in the upcoming year, but with reduced staffing capacity, the number of hours spent in providing TA will remain the same, if not decrease. Moving on to our activities. One of the components of our budget includes a grant to the CARE Coalition, which is a nonprofit that provides legal services for residents at risk of deportation. In 2023, CARE Coalition represented approximately 30 households in our city. In addition, MIMA plays a critical role in promoting civic and community engagement with immigrant communities. Each fall, we host our New American Language, sorry, our New American Leadership Institute, which is a four-week training for immigrant leaders to learn about civic engagement in our city and in the country. To date, the program has had 200 participants, and we average of 25 participants per year. We also host the Baltimore Immigration Summit, which is a one-day conference that brings together academia, service providers, government, and immigrant leaders working with and for immigrants in the region. Our next summit has been scheduled for May 31 at Morgan State University and has over 270 participants register. As part of our role of community engagement, this past year, MIMA has attended 61 outreach events, hosted 59 community meetings and events, reached more than 45,000 social media users, and distributed our monthly newsletter, where we provide updates on city services, job opportunities, and events of interest to immigrant communities in five languages to over 8,000 subscribers. Continuing with our activities. As I mentioned earlier, with the support of an ARPA grant, MIMA has been able to prioritize and expand its language access work. Over the last year, MIMA has accomplished the following. Onboarded 10 city agencies to the Language Access Program, facilitated 2,347 interactions with limited English proficient community members, or 29,000 minutes of interpretation in 27 languages. We've also translated 58 documents in 12 languages. And as I mentioned earlier, we work with the CAO to release a language access policy to direct city agencies to comply with language access laws. In our technical assistance role, we have consulted with 22 agencies to provide guidance on program, design, communications, and outreach promoting immigrant inclusion. Some notable projects to mention is preparing the launch of the multilingual 311 app. We have facilitated on the translation and just advising on the outreach plan that the agency has. We've also supported PISA with the relaunch of the city's website. We've supported MONCIE in the Brooklyn neighborhood following the shooting. We continue to support MONCIE. There is a large and growing Latino community in South Baltimore. In fact, we have an event planned for June 1st to provide services and resources, knowing that services in that part of the city are very limited. We're also a regular participant in MOCFS Guarantee Income Pilot Program. In addition, we continue to work with the Health Department to support COVID immunization outreach. And finally, after the tragic fire in Highland Town in February, MIMA staff and bilingual volunteers provided language assistance to the fire department and translation support. Some of the temporary activities that I wanted to elevate today. As you may know, MIMA is managing two ARPA projects, one dedicated to expanding our efforts on language access. The other significant project is to manage the Baltimore New American Access Coalition, or BNEC, which is a case management program for families who cannot speak English and live in the city of Baltimore. To date, the program has enrolled over 700 households, comprised of over 2,500 residents living across 25 districts. Sorry, 25 ZIP codes. The program has served immigrants originating from 29 different countries. Benefit Navigators have submitted over 1,600 applications for public benefits, facilitating successful access in 993 instances. To date, BNEC families have received approximately $515,000 in public benefits from the state mainly, averaging $300 in SNAP, TANF, ACP, childcare on a monthly basis, and $416 in programs like MEA, LEWOP, and Waterfurl as one-time assistance. Why I'm highlighting these numbers? These are monies that our families are leaving on the table because of the lack of access that they have. Yep. And finally, as you know, at the end of March, MIMA took on additional activities to support the families and the survivors of the Key Bridge collapse with case management support, thanks to one of our BNEC participants, in this case Esperanza Center in Casa. We also established the Key Bridge Emergency Response Fund. To date, the fund has raised over $820,000 to support the survivors and the victims' families, and we are supporting them with immediate and long-term financial needs. We've also taken a role of coordinating the various service providers from Casa, Esperanza, public entities from the different jurisdictions and around the county, Baltimore County, Baltimore City, the state, and obviously, the financial assistance program in partnership with the Civic Fund. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the work you continue to do with the immigrant communities. I represent a large part of Northwest Baltimore and continue to see growth, particularly in the Latino community, throughout Park Heights, Forest Park, just the very... You can actually see it now, and you can tell with the schools, like Pimlico Elementary Middle. So I heard you mention, you know, some of the ZIP codes and so on, where you have statistics of where these communities are growing throughout the city. So, Mr. Chair, I have just a request for the Committee. If you can provide us with, I guess, an update of all those ZIP codes and basically contact on how I can connect for just services that the schools might need. Or Park Heights Renaissance is very heavy with the economic development within Central Park Heights, and I'm sure they would also like to have a connect to work with some of the work that they do. They have just started their Clean and Green Team, which has that apprenticeship, and I have noticed that some of those employees are also Latino. So I guess, just, you know, some services and help, and then any way that I can help would definitely be beneficial.
Absolutely. We can make that available, you know, through our case management program called BNEC. We have been able to learn a lot more about the needs and opportunities of our residents. As you may know, this program is ending at the end of this year, as it is ARPA-funded. But with Kirsten, we're happy to get that information to you in terms of the ZIP codes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's it.
Mr. Chair, can we just have that question or that request restated very straight? I just want to make sure that we understand the request, so we're able to respond.
I think it would be beneficial if we get the ZIP codes where the population, you know, the information that you have, that you had just explained, where there's, I guess, the concentration of homeownership, renting, just where the growth is for...
For the immigrant populations.
Yes.
We can get the ZIP codes of the Latino population, especially in your area. We can get the ZIP codes of the case management program that I mentioned.
Okay.
The 29 ZIP codes as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do. You mentioned, can you go back one slide? 58 documents. Have you done translation for the Housing Department's code enforcement documents?
So this fiscal year, we haven't. We know that some of those documents are available in Spanish, but we are working with the Department of Housing and Community Development. We have their Language Access Liaison, who's been sharing materials with us, and that we're actually in the process of sending over to our translation vendor right now for translation. So in particular, one project we're working on right now is a brochure on illegal dumping that's being made available, and we're translating into the city's top five languages, but it is a bit of an iterative process. We work with them to identify a whole suite of vital documents, which are any written... ...access or services, or standby's, enforcement and city requirements. So we're working with them now to identify those, and we'll send them over.
The Housing Department, I just can tell you anecdotally, I have knocked on doors of people that say, like, this house next door is in severe need of, like, code enforcement. And I know that they speak English as a second language, or not well. And I can look up the record, and I can see that they've been sent code enforcement. You know, they've been sent citations for property maintenance conditions, or even a notice, a legal notice, that the building conditions need to be addressed, whether it's on grass or hot weeds in the property, just, you know, whatever. But I know that they're only getting those notices and citations in English. And, you know, even if there was a QR code for multiple language access online, scanned on the housing code enforcement documents, that would be, you know, as opposed to sending every household a language documents necessarily, you know. Having that online and be accessible from a QR would be helpful, and I just like, I think it's really, really important that that happened, and I've told this to the Housing Department recently, and would like you guys to follow up directly about that, specifically about citations for housing code enforcement and legal notices for housing code enforcement or property maintenance. Can I count on you guys to follow up with them directly?
Yeah, absolutely. And one thing to note in the directive sent out by the CAO's office is that as we work with these agencies to translate their vital documents, there's also a requirement to make those publicly available, especially if they are things that are, like, application forms or things that are sharing information about eligibility for programs and services. So we can work with the Housing Department to think about the best strategies for making that information available. And there's also a requirement in there for written materials to have what are known as Babbel notices. And so these are just like quick taglines at the bottom of a document that say, "Go to this website," or "Call this number" if you need to access it in a different language. And we would have that available in the city's top five languages, so that there's a quick reference point for folks who might be receiving it. So we'll work with the Department to think through those things. And we try to be really flexible and responsive, knowing that every agency has such a different suite of services that they offer to really adjust to what makes the most sense for them and the services they provide. But yeah, we can follow up.
Thanks. For the Committee here, Laura, can we ask? I don't know. Can we make a request here for HCD to contact them? Can somebody contact HCD to make sure they're making this request? We need to get that. What did you say, Babbel notice? Yeah, we need to get that onto these documents immediately. The other thing that I was going to ask about is, what is the right means for an agency to ask you, like, to contact you, to request assistance? I know that the zoning board needs translation assistance in zoning board hearings. And I'm sure it's not every week in every hearing, but from time to time, and I'm not sure how readily they will know whether or not they need translation assistance in those hearings. What is the right way to coordinate that?
We've coordinated language access in different tiers and phases. So we're currently going through Phase 1, Cohort 1, and Cohort 3. Cohort 1 is going through a refresher. I believe the zoning department is not in that cohort, right? And Cohort 3 are brand-new agencies who haven't gone through the process of onboarding as it relates to language access because of COVID, frankly. I have to get back to you on whether zoning is considered an agency that we work with, something that we are keeping in the back of our heads as our resources. And so we're really focusing on city agencies, and agencies that fall under the purview of the Mayor of the city of Baltimore. And so, for example, schools wouldn't fall under that purview, because ideally, the state has a MIMA that is thinking about language access proactively.
Zoning Board, absolutely, 100% falls under the city's purview. And this is, I think, of significantly, yes, also under the Department of Housing and Community Development. And it's of significant, and I would say, unique importance, because it is a quasi-judicial board that is required to provide appellant's due process in a legal process. And they are essentially the last line of interaction for the city, where if a person doesn't receive due process, they're either, you know, unaware that they were treated illegally and doesn't know how to avail themselves of options, or they have to appeal to a court to review the zoning board's unlawful decision, or, you know, not decision, but like, the lack of due process. And I'm thankful for the leadership that we have in the zoning board today, who I believe would not allow that to happen. But we need to be ready to afford people their legal due process at the level of their needs. And that can't really wait.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll go back and assess. One thing I want to clarify with language access. The resources that we provide are our centralized telephonic interpretation account, which can be used by any city agency, any employee, and translation documents. On-site interpretation, which is oral translation, is something that we're leaving up to the city agencies to cover the costs. But we'll get back and assess the situation of the zoning department to determine what is the best way for them to provide language access services to the residents coming through their agency.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just following up on my colleague's question. I guess this is a question I need to ask Finance. I had asked last year to make sure that every agency had a line item, a bit of money to be able to provide translators for public meetings. And because that is something we just heard MIMA say, that is not something that they provide. I do know that DPW does it for a lot of their major meetings, but this is one example, this is the zoning board, where they need that access. So did that get done this year?
There was nothing explicitly added to agency budgets for that item in fiscal '25. What I can say is that agencies are doing this work within their existing budgets. And so, again, you know, agencies continue to sort of provide those services with contracts through funding that they have available in their budgets.
So do we know that, for instance, next week, there's a meeting that the Planning Department is hosting? They are hosting a, you know, review of the comprehensive plan. I'll ask them this when they come before us, but do we... I didn't see anything on their flyer that said, "If you need language translation, call this number." So that tells me they probably will not be offering that service, right? I mean, is that, as part of your language access work with each agency, you may not be providing that service, but are you consulting with them to say, "Here's the best way to go about this," so that you can have language services at your public meetings?
Yes. Part of our role is to make sure that the language access contracts at the state level, which we piggyback, are renewed at the local level, particularly when it comes to onsite interpretation, to make sure that agencies have access to that contract and piggyback and can access that resource.
So I'm sorry, just to stop you right there. So we do have a, the city of Baltimore has a contract with a language translation provider, right?
We have contracts with telephonic, we have three separate contracts. One for telephonic interpretation, one for translation of documents, and one for onsite interpretation, which is oral translation. And part of our job is to make sure that those contracts are being renewed every three years when the state renews them. Yes.
But then there's the, we need to make sure that the agencies are taking advantage.
We need to take, we need to make sure that agencies know about it, and that's where our technical assistance comes in, with our language access liaisons, with that particular agency. And so maybe you can talk a little bit more of that.
Yeah, I can share a little bit of context here. So we have been advising city agencies on the use of interpretation in different venues and at different times. I may let the Department of Planning speak to this, but for example, the other week, they hosted an event in Lakeland, and we actually worked with them to hire an onsite interpreter for that event to ensure that they could engage the community, knowing that there's a large Spanish-speaking population in that neighborhood. We have actually been meeting with some of their planners to think through community outreach and engagement initiatives around the comprehensive plan. So wanting to be strategic on which materials we choose to translate, because, yeah, just thinking about translating a 400 to 500-page document, things along those lines, just the mechanics of what will make the most sense for their process, as well as ways that we can encourage some of our community partners to act as super reviewers for their process, as well as, yeah, different engagement opportunities with the LEP and immigrant communities. There are some best practices we've been using as well from other jurisdictions, municipalities, where when it goes as far as onsite interpretation for public hearings. In general, what we've heard is best practice is to give a 48-hour, "You have to call this number," or "Send an email to this address." 48 hours in advance of the hearing, just to ensure that we can have adequate interpretation available for that event. So for example, recently, we worked with the Comptroller's Office and the BOE for their taxpayers' night to set that up, and just had a disclaimer that it needed to be requested a certain amount of time in advance to ensure we would have them available.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So it is part of the package that you provide is advising on that work. So I appreciate that. My second question is, I noticed in the budget, we don't get your agency detail. We just, you're aligning them under mayorality. Does that change now that we've established it as an office?
No, because it was...
Established as the Mayor's Office.
It was, it's still, and it was our understanding that under that legislation, it still lives as an office within the mayorality.
Yep, okay. But I noticed that the funding goes down significantly. So can you tell me about that? And making sure that, you know, obviously, your amazing services stay...
Director Lima, I can take that question. So the newly created position that was added for MIMA exists within the mayorality. It is tagged to the incorrect activity within the mayor's office. So the position is there. It's just presented in the wrong activity within the mayor's office budget. And, but that will, the position exists as the Language Access Coordinator. It's an error in terms of the account that it's tied to. That will be corrected, you know, once we move in, or that will be corrected and will show up correctly in future budget publications.
But it'll be corrected in the ordinance that we, is it correct in the ordinance that we have? Or it's simply an accounting issue at the moment?
The ordinance establishes appropriation at the service level.
Right.
And because MIMA is included in Service 125 with all the other activities...
Okay.
Yes. There's no operational impact of having it tagged to the incorrect account. Yes, there's, there's no operational impact of having it tagged to the incorrect account, but it is something that we are working with the mayor's office to clean up.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm good.
Yes, thank you. I, sort of along the lines of what my colleague was also talking about, I think that as our, and my, all of my colleagues have talked about today, we're, we should probably work together on a strategy around kind of neighbor relations, if you will, with the growing population of people who don't speak English coming to our communities, and it's a great and amazing thing, and I'm experiencing in my district that people want to be able to have that communication, so what's the, the best way to, first of all, make sure that everybody feels welcome, and secondly, that there's a way that if they're, you know, they, people a lot call our office to help with some translation, they call your office. Eventually, the city council will be trained, hopefully, but just some way that there can be, working with our council offices around those kinds of neighbor relations. So, like, for instance, my colleague talked about, you know, citations, well, probably the neighbors of that person didn't know how to speak to them, so they just called 311. Well, maybe it would have been better to have a conversation about, you know, what needs to be done in, you know, what trash day is the right trash day, or whatever, you know what I mean? So, I'm not, so anyway, we can follow up on, on that part, because I think that that is going to be extremely important moving on. And then, I think this is probably on me, but you talked about hiring, that each agency has to hire liaisons, or at least designate somebody as a liaison. Are we tracking also hiring of non-English speakers? Because that is something that's still extremely important, and I probably should have asked the CAO about that, but I'm wondering if, if that's something that you're tracking.
Yeah, part of that directive around language access includes, when we think about language access, we think about translation and interpretation, but also the use of resources and assets we already have, including multilingual staff. So, there is a requirement for annual reporting from city agencies who are covered by this policy, and they have to include reports on the number of multilingual staff that are employed by the agency. So, that is something that's required.
That's great. So, I'll ask the CAO for that directive, and then be able to follow up on reporting, because you're going to be working with the agencies to report back on those. Perfect, that's great. And then the last piece is, you mentioned that there's a grant that's ending, and I just want to figure out how we can make sure that those resources that you're providing are not stopped.
Yeah, thank you. This grant came during the pandemic, when, as you know, information was a matter of life and death, so we created a communication specialist in our office to establish communication channels, to communicate with folks who can't speak English, but also increase our presence in ethnic media, as our folks are not watching WJC 13 or reading The Sun. This position has become very critical in our office. We, we have a part-time contractual position as an alternative, and the person who was in the full-time position will remain in this role on a part-time basis. I suspect that our engagement with, within this particular area of focus will decrease. And what, something that I want to elevate here is that this communication specialist position is not just a communication specialist for Mima, it's a communication specialist for all city agencies who don't have the expertise or capacity to build relationships with ethnic media and immigrant groups, and take the time to understand all the groups that exist in the universe of, in the ecosystem of immigrants and refugees. So, not only this person is thinking about messaging from a culturally sensitive perspective, making sure that she, she or he or they are advocates, to make sure that communications are translated, this person is also responsible for, so acting as a conduit, wants information from any city agency is developed to go out to the right channels and the right language.
Have you had discussions with the mayor's office about trying to make sure that this position is filled, this dollars are provided?
At the moment, we are transferring this person into that part-time contractual position that I mentioned.
But it would just be part-time? This definitely sounds like a full-time position for working with all of the agencies. I see someone from the mayor's office here. Thank you. Thank you, I'll follow up directly on that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm finished.
Catalina, thank you very much to you and your team. We are now in recess until 2:00 PM.